Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's March 6th of 2025. Let's begin the meeting with the Pledge of Leagues.
The United States of America to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, created in just a small.
Welcome, everyone. We begin tonight with a public hearing on a boundary line adjustment on McKinley Avenue. Is there anyone here that would like to speak or have any questions about the boundary line adjustment? For the sake of the public hearing. Hearing none will close the public hearing and move into the regular agenda of this meeting. And the first item would be approval of the agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
Chairman? All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The next item is public comment again, so we'll skip over that. And so down to new business and the boundary line adjustment with the Baird-Levins properties. Mr. Levens, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. We are here the second time and we have joining us via Zoom are Carol Baird and Francis Levens. They're the owners of the two pieces of property that are seeking the boundary line adjustment. Mark Corcel is also joining us via Zoom and he was going to be here as well, but he had a cold and he was coughing and sneezing and we told him, sorry, that he didn't want to be here. We didn't handcuff him to come here. And so, but he's available if there are any questions. He created the survey with the boundary line adjustment that we are requesting, that's being requested by the property owners. And basically, what we have is, we believe this is a minor adjustment. It affects no other properties other than the properties owned by the two people who are requesting this change. Carol Baird, the Baird property has been in existence since the seventies. It's on, her house lot is on the hill just west of the fire station on McKinley Ave as you go from seven to Grove Street. And the other lot is a lot that was identified in 2008. Legally recorded plot of a survey by George Standard was approved by this board November 22, 2008. And that is a parcel that goes out behind the fire station, mostly in a north direction and then is bounded on the north by East Creek. So the adjustment is on what I'll call, there's sort of a, I don't know, Oklahoma, there's a part of Oklahoma that sticks out, a panhandle, if you will, but there's a panhandle on the Baird house lot that goes into that field that's behind the fire station. And that is part of parcel one, lot one, which is now owned by Francis Levens. And that's in that standard survey that was approved back in 2008. So what's really being sought is an adjustment so that that panhandle becomes a part of that parcel one, lot one, and it will conform with the contours of the hill that the Baird house lot's on and that field that extends that is the Francis Levens lot. There are, as I said, no other properties that are affected by this. It's just an internal property line adjustment. It has no rights impact on any rights of way, other public facilities, and it creates no new building lots. So we would ask that the, I make a motion that the board approve the requested boundary line adjustment and that the plat, the Mylar that was created by Mark Corcel be filed with the town records. Of course, if there are any questions, please feel free to ask me or Mark Corcel, who's available. Happy to respond to that.
Yeah, Howard.
Yeah, I have a question. The, Mark's survey plat that he's made here, which you show as your exhibit D, that in the title block, it's labeled, "Boundary Line Adjustment of Portion of Lands." But on the map, this handle here, I couldn't find any place of where that was. So I've, I made up a map. I don't, does Jim have a copy of this here? This, okay.
Yes, he does.
Yeah. Nowhere on the map could I see where the boundary line adjustment was. You have, the title block says, "Boundary Line Adjustment." And so I thought, well, where is it? And so I'm not exactly sure what it was, but I worked my way around the parcel and that crosshatched area that I've got on here, to me, I think is probably where, approximately where it is.
I agree with you 100%. Yep.
And so my question is, it seems to me that we should indicate on this plat what the boundary line adjustment was, so we can see where it was. Somebody trying to do a title search 40 years from now isn't, I had a hell of a time going around this thing. I was confused. But I mean, to me, is it, I think the survey plat needs to show what lines got moved or where the, you know, where is the bounty line adjustments?
Yeah, and that line in my letter, February 6th, so I referred to that standard survey, which it looks like, Howard, that's what you have drawn out there. I'll call it that panhandle. And so it's, yeah, extended out beyond what now is Chuck Whitehead's property. So basically, it's a straight line up there. But, I mean, anybody who does a title search is going to be able to, you know, refer back to the, you know, this slide number 106, which is the 2008 standard survey, which will see where that line was. And we do have, you know, the description, you know, the meets and bounds description of what is the adjusted line. And you can look at prior deeds that give you what the old boundary was. So I don't know if you want or need both of those, because that information is on the earlier surveys.
But it's tough to find. It's tough to follow through. In a sense, this is a brand-new plat. To me, just a couple of lines, you know, added to this plat would show that. I mean, I was confused. I had an idea about where it was, but, but again, you know, since we're making a, you know, recording a new plat, we want to make it as clean and clear as possible. So somebody further down the road shouldn't have any hiccup with it at all. We're just, you know, I'm not exactly sure if I've got it exactly where it is, but it should be just a couple of lines to show.
And I, I agree with you. Like, I spent a few hours with colored pens drawing on the previous surveys where those lines were. And, you know, Mark Corcel can, you know, talk now. I mean, I have no objection to those lines going in there. Why not? I mean, it saves somebody two hours. I'm all for it.
But the lines that you talk about, your colored lines, your yellow lines and whatnot, they're different on different maps. They didn't just follow the same. And there's all the more reason why I felt we needed, if Mark could put something on this map, he would know what it should be, but something to show where it is, because the title block says, "Boundary Line Adjustment." And so where's the boundary line adjustment? You know, let's see where it is, I guess. That's my feeling.
Oh, Howard. Howard, it's Mark.
Hi, Mark.
I can, I can put like hash mark lines in that. It's basically a triangle that has changed. We've, we've added that triangle to parcel, lot one of parcel one. So if you, I can throw some hash lines on there to identify that and that should clear it up for you.
Good. I, it would for me. Does that make sense to you, Mark, to show this?
Yeah, yeah. That's not a problem.
Okay, makes sense. So yeah, as long, as long as we differentiate, it's not just another set of hash marks. There's something else, Mr. Corcel, that you could put in there.
Yeah, so I will label the hashed area as the boundary line adjustment area. So that'll be spelled right out.
Have you seen this mark, this hash mark that I hatched up?
No, I have not.
Oh, okay. You don't need the mark. You know what's what there, but I didn't know if you, when you mentioned hatch marks, I put hatch marks on this copy. I thought maybe you had seen a copy of it or something. No, I think if you could.
Yeah, do that for the final. For the final plat. Norm?
Well, frankly, this whole thing puzzles me. The new extension, the little rectangle, is that a part of somebody else's land that's being taken?
That's the access from McKinley Avenue is what that is.
Yeah, that's a 50-foot wide piece, part of this parcel, which is parcel one, lot one. So that's not affected at all.
Well, what piece is affected then? I thought it was from your discussion. I thought it was this piece here.
No, it's what's hatched right here.
Okay, it's the hash. Okay. And that is what? That is now part of?
So here's a good one. Here's the old survey that shows the Baird house lot in blue. So that's this, this piece. Right? And here's that 50-foot piece in green here. That's that part.
Okay.
So you got, you got Whitehead's property here, and that's this square. So what's happened is the boundary line is, is there. See what I mean? That, so what Howard's hashed out is, is this piece.
Can I just ask, what is the significance of the red, the yellow, and the green? And that's confusing to me. And what I'm gathering you're saying is that this, this line here is the old line.
That's correct.
And then, where is the new one?
The red line is the new one.
Now, so what's the significance of this one, the green, and then the yellow?
I guess I got overly, I put too many colors in there.
I think the green is lot one, parcel one.
Yeah. But now the, now the yellow, now the red is going to be the boundary line between Whitehead and lot one, parcel one, and the boundary between so-called house lot?
Yes. Yep.
And it's, the. I think the yellow was to illustrate what I put out there and what I hashed in, but the yellow's in the wrong place. That's, that's, if you put the yellow all around the end with hash, I think that that's to show where the boundary lines are.
Put the yellow over the green, right? Over to the red?
You mean surround what's hash marked now with yellow?
Yeah, surround what I hashed.
Okay.
If the yellow went around there, that's, to me.
Right. The yellow, the yellow should have looked more like this.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Stay here. This is puzzling. This, this, the new area is the hash marks, correct?
No, that's the old area.
That's the old area?
Yep.
Okay. And it is now being added to what?
To this green piece, which is parcel one, lot one, the green.
And who, where does it come from?
Well, this hatch part used to be a part of the house lot. So this is, so here that it looks smaller on this survey, but depending on what survey you look at.
But this used, you're restoring it basically?
No, this used to be part of the house lot.
Right.
Right.
And now it's.
Now it's part of that green lot.
Okay, so it used, and the house lot belongs to who?
Carol Baird.
Carol Baird.
Yep.
And she owns the rest of the land that here?
That's what she sold. That's what, that's what's being transferred, that whole parcel. She did own it, but now she's transferred that to a new owner.
And you carved out this small triangle for land contour reasons?
For what? I'm sorry.
For the contour, because of the contour.
Right, because it's, right, the field is flat, right? No, the yellow line in that, in that other one was still lost. No, it was misleading. And it should have been, it should have been more like that. That's the yellow.
Yeah, that totally makes sense now. And the green doesn't really, this doesn't matter.
At all.
Exactly.
Right.
So this, this line here is, exists.
Yes, that's always existed.
Yes.
Yep.
It's just, yeah, it's simple. Okay.
Yeah. It, it, it used to be part of the house lot, but now it's part of the parcel one, lot one.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
What's happening, Norm, is these boundary lines here are being moved over to here. They're moved over here. This whole bounty, this bounty and this bounty are moved over, so.
Yellow was bad in my first.
So all of this requires.
Yes, yes.
And she owns both pieces? Carol Baird owns both pieces?
Oh, yeah. She owned the whole thing. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can't.
You still own that. That belongs to Jim this year.
Yes.
I'll go buy another printer. The yellow was bad in my first letter. It should have been more like that. Yeah.
So it's just the yellow piece that's being moved.
Yellow used to be part of the blue house lot.
Yeah.
Title notice, "Boundary Line Adjustment." And they're just moving these lines.
I don't, I don't understand the purpose, but I guess it's none of my business.
My first correspondence.
It should have. Boundary line was so we wouldn't have to do something.
Oklahoma.
So, any other questions for Mr. Levens? Bill, is there any other paperwork we need to?
We'll put everything on the desk there for you.
It looks like everything's filled out.
Which is fine.
Yeah, 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 that's, but as far as the group is concerned. So I'll entertain a motion and maybe it could contain language that the final plat will delineate with hash marks the actual boundary line adjustment.
Want me to try?
Not, not to dic, no, that's okay.
I would.
Not to dictate what the motion says.
I would second that if you.
Well, just make it easy.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
But you're not going to record anything until you get the proper plat.
Right, that should be part of.
I, and I agree with that.
We're going to create a new plat, Mylar, that shows that hatched out area like Howard mentioned and Mark agreed.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Are you going?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, sorry, we're right in the middle of the vote. Mark?
Yeah. Do you want me to just make those adjustments and bring it to the town clerk, or you want me to present it to you again?
We have to see it.
Uh, it goes to Bill Sweet. It doesn't have to come back to us.
Okay.
Um, but we'll, we'll hold off signing all of this and filing all of this until we have it, which is what we do anyway, but we're just asking for one extra step from you folks on that Mylar. We always get a final Mylar.
Not a problem.
Okay. Okay, great, great. Thank you. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Always a hash mark's going to differ.
Now I've got my yellow.
You, well, I hashed that, I hashed mark just so you could see where it was. All I wonder still is this here, that's all I was trying to point out. I hashed it just to.
Is this your?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Everyone that joined on Zoom.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Glad we got this done. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Bill, the rules of procedure, we're, we're a little, we've been a little delayed in meeting at least one provision, I guess, which is the officers. The election. Anything else?
No, there's things you guys talked about changing, but unless, unless you want to say like, hey, you can do the officers tonight, which you would do, which you would do anyway. But the, if you want to change anything, I hope everybody's read it in anticipation of.
Right, I don't think so either. Okay, per the rules of procedure, we're supposed to elect officers shortly after the first, I think the first meeting after the first of a calendar year. We missed that. But we can still make the motion. So still carry this out.
I move that Barbara Polling be elected as chair of the Planning Commission. You need a separate motion for Dana?
I'll second.
Can we put them both, two in the same?
Okay, put them both together.
Okay. I move that Barbara Polling be elected as chair of the Rutland Town Planning Commission and Dana Peterson as co-chair, or, I'm sorry, as vice chair.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? One here. Okay. Now, is Dana going to come back?
I thought he came in.
He must be outside. I didn't go outside.
The phone call went outside.
Oh, okay. Well, it wouldn't hurt our, our lengthy agenda if we just had a short update, Norm, if you're prepared.
Well, I'm not. I can tell you, work continues. It is quite tedious. We have at least one more meeting to go through, and maybe, maybe more than that. I thought Dana had an outline that he was going to discuss. So I didn't really take extensive notes.
Maybe Bill has something to add?
We, we went over some more of Kevin's suggestions and we had some questions for Kevin. He's answered one of them by reference, by sending us to a different town's policy. And he hasn't answered the other one, given us opinion on the other one yet. So it's just.
Tedious.
It's, it's, it's big. I mean, there's just, there's no, besides Kevin's comments, there's nothing to go on. So what we have isn't, what we have, we have to change. He gave us some guidance, but no, he didn't give us any cut and paste language. And I, you know, it could, we could, we could ask him for that, but I'm not sure it's worth the cost for him to go through it or if we just try and do it. So our plan is to, the next time we meet in a week or so, the next, the next thing we're going to work on is the procedure, is like from, from application to approval, what's the, we're going to work on that flow and make sure it's, it's correct. So.
Yeah. Is there any value of sending any of this to VLCT?
We.
For their?
It's, there is a cost.
Yeah.
Cost to do it. We can, but I don't think, I don't think the document's in a, in a condition to be reviewed yet. So we're in the midst of, we're in the midst of so many different changes that we've got to come up with a clean draft and then probably bring it back to you all to look at it and make sure there's no questions, because once we send it to them, we're, we're obligating ourselves to that expense. So I think, you know, we're probably going to need a couple more meetings to get a lot of this squared away. And then, then we'll bring it back here and say, okay, is everybody good? Is there any clarification? And then we'll send it along. So either Kevin or the league. I'm fine with either. Really, I'm fine with either.
Is there any value putting this, to continue putting this on our agenda, Norm? Or just wait to?
I think we're probably, I think, at the rate we can meet, it's probably going to be May or June before we have a substantive update for you. So don't call us, we'll call you.
Okay.
I see the problem with it is how to make it clear to you folks what the changes are from before.
Yeah.
So that you get a copy with the new language, but indicating what we're replacing, because it isn't top to bottom.
I'm, I'm not sure a change log is going to be feasible.
Yeah.
Really, really, I don't think it's going to be.
I was getting to that.
I think, I, my thought is that we're going to come up with a new suggestion, bring it to you all, say, read it, do you have any major concerns? And then send it along and let them tell us what needs, what needs to be modified from there. It's, it's probably going to be a year before we're done with this. Between creating the language, you know, formulating the plan, getting it reviewed here and then sending it along to the league and however long they're going to take to review it, and then getting it back to this group. I mean, it's just.
Why are we going to send it to the league? Back to Kevin.
I, my only thought, my thought with that would be.
It's more expensive.
Yes, that's my thought. We'd get it back sooner.
It was nine months when Kevin had it.
Well, I, I, I just have some concerns, not opposition, but Kevin put so much time into this. And if it goes to the league without the benefit.
I think, I think let's, let's cross that bridge when we come to it. We're, we're a ways from there. So we'll hash that out.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Oh, Dana's okay.
Yeah. So let's move down to the River Corridor ordinance. Here's a couple copies.
Thank you. You got some copies?
Yes.
So I'm not sure anyone had much time to go over this since the agenda and everything was sent out. So I'll just, I'll just just walk you through where the changes are and, and next time we can discuss those. And they're in the yellow highlighting. Norm, can you see them?
Barbara, so these are the changes?
This is, yes. This is a slightly revised state model ordinance. So in, in the table, there's a couple of yellow highlights. Most people leave those blank, the non, doesn't apply, non-applicable, but we can keep those in, I think.
Barbara, before you get too deep into this, just let me ask one question. The highlighted changes, the yellow changes, are all changes that you have inserted into?
Yeah, I inserted after we had a conversation several meetings ago. So it's just, it's, it's just a quick, you know, brush look at this. So and we went through the whole ordinance and said, oh, that doesn't look right, that doesn't look. So on page three, I put in a definition for functionally dependent uses, because that's not in the glossary definitions. definitions. Uh, so that's one D.
Yeah.
One F, does not involve or authorize. I can't remember why that change was made. I'll have to look at the original one again. Um, starting on page four, it was, there's a number of, uh, instances where, uh, instead of the Development Review Board, it changes to the Board of Adjustment, which is another body that the Select Board can, um, select name, um, to review these, um, these cases as they come. I didn't, you know, I, I didn't do anything with, on page five, the development standards, you know, with those graphs, I think we'll get used to them over time. And be able to explain them. On page six, there was a question from the group, um, do we add the Moon Brook Stormwater Ordinance? That's part of our M S four, and, um, that is not the same thing as, as a River Corridor. In fact, I don't think there's much of a River Corridor in the Moon Brook watershed, maybe the small stream, but.
We're all reading, Barbara?
Um, we've, on s, page seven.
Page seven.
Okay, another Board of Adjustment, um, addition there, instead of Development Review Board. Um.
So we're changing develop, everywhere Development Review, Review Board appears, it's?
Yeah, should be, it should be gone, yeah.
I had a question about that.
This copy. Uh, two C, um, there was a question from this group, uh, why is this needed? Uh, interior improvements, repairs to existing buildings, these, these would be exempt, um, that costs less than $500. Um, it's, it's a, a threshold that I believe, uh, FEMA has put in here.
Yeah, the question, I think, was just the amount, the dollar amount.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I have, why 500?
And, um, we can check with. Let me see about that. Um, page eight, another Board of Adjustment, page nine, Board of Adjustment. Um, page nine, um, section E, Development Standards within the Flood Hazard Area, there's a definition of the no net loss of flood storage capacity that was brought up here, and hopefully that that answers that question.
I, I have the explain there, and I don't understand, so can you say that again?
So, um, what's in the ordinance originally was no net loss of flood storage capacity.
Right.
Um, is one of the conditions for the development standards. Um, and there was a question about what does that mean? So there's one definition, the amount of water that can be stored to reduce the impact of flooding, such as through floodplains and wetlands. So instead of the water, all of it going down, there is, you have some flood storage capacity through the functions of floodplains and wetlands.
Okay.
Um, down in number four, under section E.
Hang on, before you get to four, I had a question about, um, D F E.
About which one?
Uh, it's three, uh, just above that, fuel storage tanks must be elevated above the D F E.
Oh, the, um, the
What elevation?
The elevation, yeah, this usually needs an engineer to.
I think that should be spelled out, that appears earlier.
It's, it's in the, it's in the definitions.
Design flood elevation.
Design flood elevation.
I, I, I get it, but I still think that acronyms should be spelled out. They can be refer, referenced into the, into the definition section, but I don't think that it should just have a, an acronym, or letters, that, that was my.
Yep.
Spell it out.
It's in a couple places on that page.
Yeah, I know, well, I have the same question each time I saw it. I know that was one of my, Sherman, you also had the same question that I, yeah, you stood for.
So in number four, that's pretty much FEMA language, and those are specific zones that are mapped by FEMA. Um, so thi, this is where the floodway limits have not been determined, this needs to be done, in this paragraph.
But what hasn't been determined?
The floodway limits in those zones. Most of them are by FEMA mapping, but not all of them, sometimes they're not. So, you know, it's gonna be who, some of these property owners that wanna develop, that they're going to have to hire of, an engineer and answer some of these questions. It's gonna.
Was it the town of Royalton, or somebody else that rejected their, um, uh, policy on, um, what hazard in River Corridors? I just heard on V P R that that went to the town, it, it was, it was on the eastern part of the state.
Hmm.
Uh, somebody, they rejected whatever they were proposing in, along these lines, so.
A town meeting, or?
Yeah, yep. I, I can't, I think it was Royalton, but I, I may be wrong.
Yeah, so, I mean, again, most.
We have to do our education, that was my only point in mentioning that, is that we have to.
Yeah, and, and, you know, indications are that these are gonna become mandatory by the state.
Yep.
And that some of the economic advantages to doing it now may go away when they make it mandatory, because right now, they're there as, as a carrot.
Right.
Yeah, incentive. Um, there was a question on page 10 about what FEMA's zone A O is.
Yep.
It's FEMA Zone A O. It's on the maps.
But what is it? What, what does it mean?
Yeah, it probably isn't, it's, it's a certain distance.
So, so isn't it, doesn't, isn't it just used to identify a, a section on the map?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to know what it referenced. Zone A O. Is it in zone, or is it in FEMA?
Yeah, it's not in the definitions.
It's a question, why is it?
Definitions.
I don't understand. I mean, it just seems clear to me, that, that's why I don't understand. It's just, it could be called Zone 30, just so you know that.
I'd be asking the same question. What does that mean?
It, it just means that, that's this, this on the map, that's this section.
Each zone usually has different characteristics associated.
That's not, that is not part of.
When you go to the, online to the FEMA flood maps, they, they're labeled. This, this is a general description, it's not, doesn't, just refer to like, this section of this part of property, whatever. It refers to their mapping tool, so if you put your property in, and you have a zone A O, then it applies, the only way to know is to look at their maps.
Okay.
I don't think it, I don't think it would clarify much to describe what the zone, what type of zone it is. Uh, they're all in the floodplain. And there's slight differences between the two, and you just, yeah.
I, I was just, uh, asking the question, because if somebody asks that, I don't know how to answer. Other than it's what's labeled on the FEMA map, but.
Well, we could have a list of all of the zones.
I mean, I'm not saying that we need that for the, uh, for the bylaw, but I am suggesting that if we're focusing on education, that it should be a comprehensive.
I understand what you're saying.
Education, and, you know, FEMA zones are listed as this, that, the other thing, and O A is the other thing, whatever.
Dana, but if, if we refer to those zones here without definition, I think we're doing a disservice. And I, I think if there is a list of what these zones are, and it's not too comprehensive.
It, it's going to be very comprehensive.
It'll be a page or something.
Yeah, it's, that's, it refers back to FEMA map, that's all, that's, that's what it does. So, I, I would, I would say this is refer, this is based upon those determinations. So this would assume you've already looked at that, or if you haven't, you have to, you have to look at it anyway, so.
Then some reference ought to be prominent to those definitions, some reference in here should be prominently stated.
Dan?
So that they can be found easily by the landowner, attorney, engineer, et cetera.
Even, okay, just even a link?
You just said maybe.
Maybe both, you know, just some statement with a link, that kind of thing.
So it says in our, like, lands to where it applies, it shows the example map, and it shows like FEMA map, like the zones and, and whatnot, it, it says that there, we, we use the most current ones published by FEMA, and the only way, the only place those are are online. There's no way to update, there's no way to put the maps in the, in the documents, so.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't, uh, I wasn't asking to do that, I was just asking for a point of education about what zone A refers, is it a, is it a higher uh, priority zone, is it a lower priority zone, is it a general priority zone?
You know, it's basically, it's a zone that's, it's, it's been mapped. I mean, I, I don't wanna.
I think on this page right here, it kinda explains that. What page is that, I mean, 20?
It's in the floodway, and they have, they do have several different categories.
The corridor, special flood hazard, special flood hazard, oh, A E, yep, I see it. So, uh, what I, what I would do then is I would, which satisfy, satisfy my curiosity, is to put, uh, see page 20. For description, and then that's, that's, that's all I need, or somebody who thinks like me, if there's anybody else that would do that. It's an area of special flood hazard. A, A, E, O, A O, H, or A 130.
They use all different designations, like flood, we have all, different use, different letter destinations for different.
My point is that those are special flood hazard zones.
Hmm.
That, that's it, and that, that's a simple enough explanation, see page 20, thank you, 20 for that.
Okay. Page 11, we've got defined flood elevation again.
Barbara?
Yes.
My suggestion is that the first time D F E appears, is this let me just highlight it that way.
Hmm. And so there was also on page 11 a question about in, uh, G 1. Um, I think so we're talking about, uh, you know, storage facilities, basically. Um, should be designed to automatically equalize hydrostatic flood forces on exterior walls by allowing for the entry and exit of floodwaters. So I think it's defined there.
Yeah, my question was, what does it mean?
So it's a, it's an exterior wall designed to allow for entry and exit of floodwaters.
Yeah. Okay, I still have my question, what does that mean?
But saying that, if you, if you have a parking space, like, like a, if it's, if it's used for any of those purposes, and it's below the defined flood elevation where the flood's going to come to, it has to allow for water flow. You have to allow water to enter and exit.
Then that, that in parentheses would be a, a great example of what it means, I mean, I, I'm just asking these questions because, you know, you can, you could take somebody and have you walk, and, and walk it, walk you through it, but if you don't have, if you don't have an initiation to that, I mean, I could posit that that's what it means, but I don't know how to interpret that in terms of practical application. This is a, this is a, this is a document that is highly technical.
Yep.
And most people would have a difficult time.
Yep.
Understanding what it means.
They need to hire an engineer.
Yeah.
They're, they're in the flood zone.
I, 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 I understand that. As an educator, my goal is always to make documents accessible in a non-jargon way
Yeah.
to the average person, they would still have to hire an engineer to design it.
Right.
But the point is that they could understand it without having to pay an engineer and take the time to interpret all of it for them. I, I'm just, just saying.
We, we are gonna be quite limited in how we change the language.
I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, Barbara, what I'm suggesting is, Andy had a great idea, refer, see page, see page 20.
Oh, you, that was your idea, I found it on page 20.
Okay, you found it on page 20, well, I'm giving you credit for helping inspire my idea, I guess. And the same thing with Bill. You know, i- if, uh, you're, if your, uh, storage area is below grade, you have to, you have to design it for water to flow in and out of that, because it's going to be flooded. That, that's all it is, it's the simple language that allows them to.
That is what it is. It almost just says that here, doesn't it?
Yeah, if you read, if you read all of G and, and 1.
Uh, you're, you're, you're preaching to somebody who can do this. I'm not advocating for myself, I'm advocating for people who aren't going to be able to take this highly academic language and, 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 and translate it into a practical, uh, understanding, that, that's all I'm really doing. And if I can't answer the question myself in three seconds or less to somebody that I'm talking to, in my opinion, that's a problem, that, that's all I'm saying. So I hate to be bullheaded about it, but every time that I can't give a very specific answer to what this means, I say we have a language problem that we need to address. So, my linguistic.
Speaking of problems, I got a problem on page seven.
Seven?
All the way back, yep.
Exempt activities, back to that $500 threshold.
Yeah.
You can't get a room painter today for 500 bucks. So, I, I think we need some language that takes the dollar amount out, because with inflation or whatever, five years from now, $500 could be more meaningless than it is now. Um, you know, and, and, and otherwise, I mean, if we leave it in there, we're gonna be whoever the board of adjustment comes out to be is just gonna be, either people are gonna be either violating the law.
Right.
Or they're gonna be coming to us for permits. And I don't know what the permit fee is gonna be, but, um, and I've seen frankly in, in where I used to live in Fort Charlotte, they used to have a two hundred and fifty dollar fee to install a hot water heater. Well, how many people do you think actually paid a fee that's higher than the cost of the hot water heater you're putting in? If you do it yourself, so that's my point. The five hundred dollars just seems arbitrary and, and to the point that, that the most, the smallest project that you're not doing yourself will require a permit. But how are you gonna define it? Um, that's what I'm looking for here. A little help. I mean, saying, we're saying right here, routine maintenance of existing buildings, interior improvements or repairs um, that do not add any square footage or substantially change the, the, uh, the structure of the building. Or capacity.
Mm-hmm.
Or occupancy.
I mean, the, it, it is, and I had that same.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Norm. The occupancy does not, in other words, adding bedrooms or whatever.
Five hundred dollars just seems to be an arbitrary number. It, it doesn't have any practical application, so I'd agree with it.
Okay.
Other than to make everyone, it, it, to have that in there, we might as well just say, okay, everyone needs a permit to do anything.
Right. I mean, i- i- in B above it, it's routine maintenance of existing building. I mean, it almost covers that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I, I wonder what the point of interior improvements or repairs to existing buildings that cost less than five hundred dollars.
Maintenance is painting and, and, and a repair like we're doing a window or whatever. But an interior improvement could be adding petitions.
Yeah.
Um, that kind of thing. Which really I don't think should require a permit other than unless it's a, you know, it, it would come under a building permit. Or we could put that, I mean, that any building permit, anyone that applies for a building permit in this flood hazard area needs a permit that's required here.
Yeah.
So.
The, the dollar value seems like it is out of place.
Yeah.
That's all. And if we can remove that or, or change the language as, as Andy suggested.
Said, we could say, what, what I heard, I think it was Norman said, interior improvements, repairs to existing building that, um, do not alter square footage and do not increase the number of bedrooms or do not increase the occupancy. Gotta think about it, but I understand what you're saying.
I, I think that, that maintenance at five hundred dollars there is to differentiate between something very simple like maybe repairing a window.
That could cost you five hundred bucks.
Well, something that you could call maintenance, it would be under five hundred.
Well, the maintenance, yeah, is on, under B, was al- already taken care of.
Well.
I'm gonna give you an example of something that we're dealing with. It's a real, it's a real situation right now. Um, we are doing some, um, uh, remodeling of bedrooms. All interior, doesn't change the square footage. It doesn't, uh, change the occupancy. It's, it's making it more, uh, sound desirable and it's expanding the opening to a closet space. That's gonna cost us a thousand or more. So we need a permit because it's over the five hundred mark? That, that, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, we're not changing anything except the opening so that we can have access, easier access to our clothes in the closet. So this, that's why I asked the question. I mean, I didn't, this wasn't on the, wasn't on my personal agenda previously. It just seemed like it was arbitrary. But that's a real, uh, situation. We can't get the new doors for the opening in the space, so we have to redesign the space to buy the doors. The doors themselves will cost seven hundred and some dollars, plus the, the, the carpentry.
All right, let's, let's move on.
Okay.
Taken and, um.
You're back to page eleven?
We'll check with Kyle on what, how strict FEMA is gonna be about that. So are we done with eleven?
Uh. I gotta get back to that, um, the new.
I, I, the more I look at eleven.
Page eleven.
Designed to automatically equalize hydrostatic flood forces. I couldn't explain that in a week.
The opening has to be sufficient that if water comes in, no matter water coming in, it can equal the water going out.
And that's why I said.
The water.
It says that here.
Hmm. But that's why I said that all we need to do is use, uh, Bill's example in parentheses, for example, boom.
Yep.
Or.
Yeah, somehow it's gotta be figured out.
Right, uh, uh, an opening in a wall needs to be sufficiently big to allow for water flowing in and flowing out. Is that right?
That's, that's what, that's what it's talking about, yeah, is it's so water, the water pressure doesn't destroy the structure.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's why it says designs will be certified by our engineer. So it's the engineer that's gonna say, yes, it meets these requirements. It's up to the pers- it's up to the person to know they need to go get some professional services. It's up to the professional.
Right.
To know what they need to meet. And we can explain things down to a, 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 a lower level. But it's only kind of justifying the reason for it, not really any other purpose, because they're still gonna have to, unless they are an engineer, which case they already understand it.
Right.
And the BOA will never be able to say, oh, yes, that, that equalizes the pressure.
Right.
In and out.
Oh, and nor would you want to.
Right.
And no doubt we will be the BOA.
Right. That's why I had a question about that.
It's, 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 no, it can't be like the whole planning commission. It can be planning commission members, but there has to be other people that are, who are better versed in this stuff.
All I'm saying is that we need to include an example. That, that's it, so that people can understand it.
Okay, page twelve. Administration. AO, Department of Officer, that would be Bill. Page twelve, and there's statutory, oh, links for both the AO and the BOA, the Board of Adjustment.
As opposed to the BOA instead of DRB.
Yes.
Now BOA.
Right. Right, so we need to change that down there.
So it will be in the second line, it will be BLA instead of DRB.
Yep.
All instances where we see DRB will be replaced by BOA, is that right?
Yeah, and I want Kyle to double check the citations. Because, uh, I did change all those to be BOA related. Now, I, I forget, you know, on C, the application C one, why there was a question about special flood hazard areas.
Say that again, Barbara.
That's, aren't those the FEMA designated ones? I, I think that should, I think that references those.
Can you reiterate your question so I can get?
Um, there was some question from this group about special flood, the word special. Or, and actually, now I'm remembering, it just said flood hazard areas, so I added special, which is the FEMA title for these things.
Okay, so you added that.
Yep.
What's it mean? What's the difference between a special flood hazard area and a flood hazard area?
They have a higher risk of flooding or they have a?
They're FEMA mapped, yeah.
Yes, yeah, and they're official.
And that's referenced, you can say, reference page, page twenty. Where it actually explains that a little bit more. Why are there question marks, uh, Barbara, on, um, the end of that paragraph under Board of Authority? Or Adjustment, excuse me.
Oh, um, the citation, just wanted to double check the citation.
Check the citation, okay. And you're gonna ask Kyle to do that?
Yeah. Page thirteen. BOA and citations have been inserted um, down to public notice, section E, number four. Um, we will not ask the applicant to bear the cost of the public warning. We just don't, we don't do that here. And I don't think we need to change that one.
Four.
E four.
Oh, E four, I'm sorry, I was on four above E, yep. Yeah, we had a question about that.
Um, some more BOAs and citations. You know, in, in, you know, all of the BOA citations are in different places than the Development Review Board ones, so those tend to be changed. Um, or BOA, the bottom of fourteen, throughout fifteen. Just the insertion of BOA over DRB. Um. In the definitions, on page seventeen, I added Bo- Board of Adjustment.
Might fit paren, BOA.
In paren.
I'm sorry.
In paren.
In parenthesis, yeah.
Yeah.
Where did you say you added it, Barbara?
Um, about a third of the way down on page seventeen. In alphabetical order.
No, I see that, I was on the wrong page. I was on fifteen for some reason.
So, you know, the rest of it's just definitions that we probably don't wanna change. We could add to them. And so, you know, I could send these questions off to Kyle, questions we came up with tonight. Get some answers for the next time. Norm, you indicated at one point, you'd like to see that, that the definitions are normally at the head of an ordinance, beginning of the, an ordinance.
It is, for instance, it is with our subdivision, as I recall, with the subdivision regulations.
It's one of the, it's like the second or third section.
Yes, it's way up there. And most, and not all, but many statutes have it right at the beginning too.
I know, this is five and a half pages of definitions. So I think that's why they put them at the end. Cause you don't know where, it's kinda hard to tell where the actual ordinance starts.
But it, it would be helpful.
It's nothing to some indication that the definitions.
Were at the end.
Exist.
I would, I would, I would recommend the same thing that I was talking about with Andy's, that see page whatever, so we could put definitions in there and say, uh, by, the definitions found in this document can be, uh, referenced on page whatever, or in the appendix.
We can, we can format it like our other ones.
Yeah, like a little. Has table of contents.
Right, just so that people know that the definitions can be found
Yep.
Elsewhere.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, when the, when the number of definitions is somewhat limited, it's, it's convenient to have them up front.
It is. It is. Yeah. But when they're five and a half pages.
Yeah, some people may not wanna spend the time reading five and a half pages of definitions, particularly if they're engineering, they know what they mean.
Even with a table of contents, I think it's still too much, too bulky at the beginning. Even if you had a table of contents, says the definitions are like one, pages one through five, and then.
They can skip them, they won't.
I, I was suggesting that if, if you're gonna do it, I mean, you can do a table of contents, or you can put section two definitions, see appendix or whatever, and then you know that the definitions can be found at the back if you're you know, but if you're putting them in the, um, table of contents, that works just as well. If people read the cable of contents, but.
Yeah, it, it might be easier than trying to find every, everywhere that these words are used.
With a table of content.
I have a different comment, but not, not the same.
Every time accessory dwelling is used. Oh. We'd have to go, you know, yeah, we do assert.
I'm sorry, Barbara, I'm not, I'm not following.
Yeah, never mind. Sherman.
I, I have a table of comments, comment. And throughout, there's, there are these def- these acronyms where DEI is and.
Yeah.
And, and when it, when it's in the definitions, it's not at the beginning, it's in it, it may be, usually next, it will say whatever it is, and then I'm a DEI. If you put the DEI in a bit of, of the line.
Uh-huh.
It'd be much easier to find. For instance, if I'm looking for Board, BOA, uh, if, if you're gonna put BOA after Board of Adjustments, I could miss it going through this, but if you put BOA in parentheses there.
Yeah.
Followed by Board of Adjustment, it's much easier to follow, much easier to find. And that, and there's sev- it's not just one thing here, there are several of them here.
So, uh, Nor, uh, excuse me, uh, Sherman, if we look on page seventeen,
Mm-hmm.
The only one that I could, well, they, uh, one, two, third one down, it says base floor elevation.
Right.
BFE. Are you suggesting that BFE should precede base?
Yes. And, and that's just one example that.
Right, but if you take every acronym, or if you take every abbreviation and put it at the front, followed by the definition, you think it would be easier?
Yeah, I thought it'd be easier to find.
Sherman, my only suggestion is that, is that the point, if, if you're gonna move the acronym in front of the definition, you have the acronym and then the definition in parentheses, and not vice versa, as you suggested. It just, it, it interrupts the flow a little bit.
Yep. I'm, I don't care.
What do we read to? What do we read to?
The, the, the three letters, the, the acronym, and then the definition in parentheses, not the other way around.
The expansion of the, uh, what the acronym means, yeah.
Oh, oh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not, not the definition per se, but just.
That's what you said, dude. You said put the acronym first and then, yeah. And he's saying, put the definition in parentheses.
No, I'm okay.
Oh, you know?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, then I missed.
I said, put the acronym and then put the words.
Is that what I said?
That's what he said.
He doesn't consider that the definition, the definition's a whole sentence.
Right, right.
But put the words in parentheses following the acronym, right? Is that, is that not what he said?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm done, I'm, you.
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Okay, I'm too.
I thought you would be.
Okay, on that note, let's leave this for now. I'll follow up on some stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Oh, sure.
Good job.
Now. Yeah, so don't be too disappointed if Kyle comes back and says been through that, been down that road before. FEMA will only accept this and only accept that. But we'll try to get some of these things remedied.
FEMA isn't writing this, we're writing this.
FEMA is approving it. This is FEMA money that we're talking about. If there's anything left.
Well, if there's a FEMA left, you know, it may all be a moot point.
Just a final thought, what are we gonna do if FEMA doesn't exist in the near future?
If FEMA can be tough to deal with, they, they may not exist anymore, right?
You thought they were tough to, to work with before, geez. Short staff.
Well. Our new staff.
Some guidance as tough as it may be, is better than. is better than no guidance.
And the context of that is?
Uh, just that if FEMA doesn't exist, then we're in a bigger problem than if we have a FEMA that exists that stuff to work with, that's all I'm saying.
$500 or not. I can bring 20 or 30 people in here easily, if I could bring them up here, that would tell you that if FEMA didn't exist, they'd be a lot better off.
Okay, there you go.
And the horrible arbitrary way they just went through and determine what a value of a house is in, in a 10-minute thing, and then say, and determine how much it will cost to repair that house, and if it comes to more than 50%, you can't rebuild. Doesn't matter if you have enough cash to.
If the cost to repair, or the cost to replace is more than 50% of the wall.
Even if you have the money.
You're going to have the money yourself, and you want to do it yourself.
How's that? That doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's, that's how it, how it works.
Because they're in the special flood hazard area?
Oh, 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 if you're in, I see, yeah. Well, that, that's the risk that you take.
Not, not, not neighborhoods or streets on the periphery of the flood zone.
No, I'm talking neighborhoods, one right after another, house after house.
Neighborhood AO.
Yeah, all in the same house, but that's what happened.
Yeah. Well, I guess I.
Kind of a kick in the teeth?
I, I set that out only because, I mean, I've, we've all heard in the news that the, the president wants to eliminate or downsize FEMA, so, uh, I don't know what'll certainly this, what we're putting together here is definitely worthwhile. Man, think, we definitely don't want development in flood zones.
No, right, absolutely.
And I certainly stand behind that.
Yeah. Whether, you know, it's not hurricanes, but it's, you know, it's.
Is there any potential for a natural disaster you want to avoid?
Yeah.
You can't avoid everything, but.
Even yesterday was a little scary. I mean, the, the hard rain on top of the snow.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't where I live, but.
FEMA, my little experience with them, with the fire district we have here, just for, you know, several thousand dollar damage, they put you through hell. I mean, it, it is unbelievable how, how it goes and goes and goes, and, and before you can number one ever see the check. And it's just I couldn't believe what, what we went through. And, and, and it's for, for a little teeny thing, so anybody that's got any serious project, any real problem, I don't know how they, how they deal with it.
Yeah, yeah, one solution I've heard is that, uh, they would replace a lot of that with block grants to the state. And the states would figure out how they would divvy up that
Yeah, well, it's still the same thing. Somebody's got to put some guidelines in place. Term of that.
But it'd be more, yeah.
It would be the state.
It'd be the state, be more localized.
And they may not have enough money to, to address everybody's problems, so it comes back to the same thing.
Yeah.
That's why it, it's in everybody's interest to adopt some level of, of precautionary guidance to prevent things of a disastrous nature from happening, if you can.
And to not have to rely on FEMA. Because you're not in the danger areas.
You don't place your, right, if you don't put yourself in harm's way, then there's less likely, uh, it is less likely that you would have to put in a claim for a catastrophic loss.
Right. Okay, we've got a little more business to do tonight. Um.
Just out of curiosity, I, I mean, I had to absent myself because my wife was in distress. Um, anyway, so, uh, did we pass the boundary line adjustment?
Yes, we did. Uh, with, they, yes, they still need to make some adjustments on the math, on the Milar.
With.
Correct the math, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, old business down at the bottom. Um, Norm brought this up, that, that is a, that is state statute and what needs to be in the minutes. I don't think we need to talk about this in much depth. Um.
You're talking about that?
Raised it, okay, that's why, um, can I speak?
No.
Are we talking about what we, what we received for the statutes online?
Yes.
It's on the third page, right at the top. And what happened is after last, after the last meeting and the discussion about the minutia that I corrected, et cetera, or suggested, and Jerry's comments and Bill's, Bill's comments, uh, I just decided to take a look and see at, at the statute to see what the minutes require, uh, what the statute requires of minutes, what we have, and what my nitpicking over the course of several years, you know, whether it fits or not. And frankly, after looking at it, it seems to me that our minutes meet the statute, uh, statutory requirements of A, B, C, and D.
Yep.
Um, and, um, you know, the kinds of things I've been talking about really don't impact these.
Right.
And, um, uh, it also came to mind that in, I don't know, just six or seven years that I've been on the Planning Commission, uh, nobody has ever raised a question about the minutes. So I think I've been letting the lawyer and former journalist, uh, get in the way of progress, and I will try and, um, curtail my comments to really necessary corrections and not let the rest go, and I apologize to Jerry and, and to Bill for taking that time.
We, we, I, I do include more than is necessary, more than the minimum, because I know it helps later for clarification.
But that's okay.
But if I, if I included the minimum, it would make my job a lot easier. This, this discussion will be reviewed, river corridor ordinance, no action was taken.
Right.
That'd be, that, that would be the entirety of the topic, rather than discussing some of the things we're actually talked about, so.
Well, all I'm saying is that I'm going to step back from, unless it's really or maybe even just call you and talk to you before I
Sure.
come with the corrections, and we can iron it out that way, but
That's clear.
We're going to try and take less time.
Yeah. So, yeah, the, I mean, the, the crux of this is it's a true indication of the business of the meeting.
And it, and it does it, and they do it, and there's never been a dispute.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe I'm just.
And now we have a recording that's available. If anybody reads the minutes, they can check the recording for at least 30 days.
And, yeah, and frankly, I mean, just.
They're uploaded to YouTube, they're there, or it's on YouTube, they're.
Right.
What?
Good.
I mean, frankly, you know,
But that's statute.
Maybe I've just been slicing the onion too thin, or reading it too closely, and.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you, Norm.
Any announcements? Okay, let's go to the minutes of February 13.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? It's, uh, anyone needs, anyone's name need to be taken? Uh, no.
I wasn't at the meeting, I didn't.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. Uh, I just put a, as I wrote through, I, I checked it off, but ethics training, did we? Why did I write that? It's been a couple of days since I read these.
Scheduled to do it.
We were, but, um.
Tonight.
Where does it appear, right, where does it appear in the minutes? I can't remember. Why did I do that? Oh.
Announcements.
It's under announcements. Select board recently passed.
I think I read it, yeah.
It requires town officials. Uh, after discussion, this will be done as a group after the next meeting. I thought it was at, at our next meeting, no?
Uh, I don't think we want it on the record how we're answering the questions. You know.
It does not need to be.
Oh, oh, okay, I understand now. When this meeting concludes, we will do it tonight.
It, it also leaves open the option that you can still do it yourself online.
Right.
Which we can talk about next.
It was just my, my understanding of, yeah. We could do it tonight after this meeting concludes, is what that means, or could mean. Yep, got it, okay.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on the minutes of February 13? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Guys, Sherman? And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.